Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order regular city council meeting for Monday, April 14th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of our national anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members who have given their lives for our country. If you'd please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, if you take roll call, please.
Mayor Jacobs?
Here.
Mayor Protam Dold?
Here.
Councilmember Hughes?
Here.
Councilmember Witt?
Here.
Councilmember King?
Here.
Councilmember Dold?
Present.
Councilmember Carefotis?
Here.
You have a quorum of seven.
Thank you. Next up is item four, approval of the agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Monday, April 14th council meeting agenda as presented.
Support? Support from Mayor Protam Dold. Any comments from the table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes 7-0. Sorry about that. Okay, we have no recognitions. I do see our state representative, Dylan Wiegala.
Good evening, council. I was trying to remember last time I was here. I think it might have been January. Anyway, it feels like it's been a while. I wanted to make sure I come back, as I do. Got a variety of things. Probably got to talk a little longer than you probably will like, but I will do my best to be concise. First and foremost, I want to address lame duck and the one fair wage proposal, because I think there's been, I don't know what else to call it besides information that might not be 100% correct out on this. So just to walk through what happened in 2018, to walk back, there was a ballot initiative called the One Fair Wage Ballot Initiative. They gathered over 300,000 signatures to get on the ballot, a legislation that essentially would raise the minimum wage, get rid of the subminimum wage, also some people call that the tip credit, and provide earned paid sick time for all employees in the state of Michigan. So this got enough signatures to get on the ballot. At the time, the Republican-controlled legislature decided to adopt the ballot measure instead of having it go to the ballot, something that we can do. But the problem was, several months later, they essentially stripped out various parts of the proposal, not raising the minimum wage to the $15 an hour, not giving people their earned paid sick time, et cetera. So there was a lawsuit that lasted six years. And in 2024, in the summer, the Supreme Court ruled that this would then go into effect this coming February, as written, because they ruled that it is unconstitutional to adopt a ballot proposal and then change it later, months later, before going into effect. So there's this deadline in February. So then lame duck comes, and the Republicans in the House decided to stop showing up to session in early December. And we need 56 votes to pass a law, so Democrats had 56. So if all the Democrats agreed to a bill, it would still pass. And they walked out in protest of the one fair wage law, arguing that it needed to be changed for a variety of reasons. We had one Democrat decide to join them in that protest, which then shut down the Democratic trifecta's lame duck period in 2024, effectively ending session, no bills could get passed, no laws, et cetera. Come to the new session this year, House Republicans worked with the governor and Senate Democrats to change one fair wage before coming into effect. Lots of changes, but the two I will highlight today was their changes stripped thousands of workers from earned paid sick time that they would have accumulated, and also kept the subminimum wage in place, keeping tipped workers at 50% of the pay rather than of minimum wage, rather than the 100% that they would have gotten to if the Supreme Court order had gone into effect. What was highly unusual in terms of politics with that move is that even though the majority of the Senate, in the Senate, Democrats are in control, even though the majority of Democrats voted no, Senate leadership decided to put this bill up. And so Senate, the Democrats had control of the chamber, put up a bill that the majority of Republicans voted for and Democrats voted against, still passed and changed anyway. Every single labor union, besides, I think, the firefighters' union, was opposed to any changes to these laws, but the governor and Senate Democrats did so anyway. I voted no on these proudly, because I believe everyone deserves to be paid a minimum wage and not a subminimum wage. And then two, I believe that everyone deserves paid sick time off. That's my update on that. That was a lot, so I'll answer questions at the end if there are some. We're now in divided government. Republicans control the House. I went from a 54-56-54 split to a 58-52 split. And I, proud to say, I got my first bill passed in February out of the House. What my bill does, and I worked across the aisle, I worked with a Republican on this, it bans lawmakers from signing non-disclosure agreements related to legislation that comes before the House. I thought this was an important ethics change. What we've seen is the government will come to agreements on multimillion-dollar subsidy packages with corporations, and the lawmakers will sign non-disclosures. So if I were to sign one as lawmaker, I could not tell my councils, my community, what was going on. So my bill passed 91 to 17. Now we're trying to get it to move in the Senate. With a new session comes new committees for me. Last year, I was on all policy committees, education, labor, elections, ethics, and military veterans and homeland security. This year, I am on oversight committees, looking into government oversight. I am the vice chair of the Corporate Subsidies and State Investment Committee. I've been finding this work to be really important. I've been working with my chair, who is the one who worked with me on this bill, he's a Republican. And we have been looking at the mega tax credits, which have been around for about 30 years in Michigan. They are tax credits given to large corporations so that they can essentially pay less taxes. This program has costs, or is projected to have cost the state of Michigan $9.4 billion over the course of its term. Some really good committees, sessions we had on that. If you're interested, people in the public or on the council, reach out, and I can point you to, we got a chance to ask a bunch of questions into this. And I'm hoping we can end the program early, because I think a lot of people would argue we haven't seen the benefits of it. We are giving twice the amount of corporate subsidies and business subsidies in Michigan, two times more than any other state in the country. And I would argue that our economy has not seen the benefits. Imagine that money going to schools and roads and et cetera. Where else did I want to go? Oh, taking back our power. You've heard me talk about this a lot. Last year, I worked to introduce bills that would ban utilities and monopoly corporations from donating through dark money pathways to 501(c)(4)'s and 527's. These are hard-to-track contributions to candidates. The reason I've introduced this last year was because, in my view, factually, DTE spends more money on politics than any corporation in the state of Michigan. I'm very proud to say I don't take corporate campaign money and DTE money. So what we're trying to do is prevent them from donating through the secret money pathways that the public can't see. Several other states have this. We've expanded this legislation to include all monopoly corporations this year, as well as it is now a bipartisan package. So I'm getting a little more hope. We're getting, I think we have something like 30 lawmakers signed on. It's like a snowball. We're starting to see some progress there. And lastly, I couldn't come up here today consciously without sharing my concerns with what's happening federally. Related to the state budget, 40% of federal dollars, 40% of the state budget is federal dollars. What we're seeing honestly has me very concerned. I am someone who believes in free speech. I am someone who believes in following the Constitution. We have seen an administration that has gone after permanent residents and has detained them without due process. I've led the effort in the state of Michigan to get 50 lawmakers to sign on to a letter calling for that due process to be restored and for Mahmoud Khalil to be freed. I'm proud of that work, because it really scares me. And people who don't know, permanent residents have all of the constitutional rights as citizens, except the right to vote. So they have the right to free speech, et cetera. And I don't believe that because of our disagreements, somebody should be deported because of that. We have also seen regular, we've seen mistakes happen where someone was accidentally sent to a El Salvadorian prison. Abrego Garcia was sent there by mistake, admitted by the Trump administration. And the Supreme Court has ordered for him to be returned. That has yet to happen, and today we had the El Salvadorian president say that's not going to happen. This prison has been known for human rights violations. It's been known for people dying in that care. And we sent someone there by mistake. That is deeply concerning to me, regardless of their citizenship status, as well as the fact that when those planes took off, the courts ruled that they should turn around, and they did not. The rule of law and the three branches of government is fundamental to how we do anything. I was a history teacher, and that is concerning. I'm also concerned on the efforts in the House at the federal level to cut Medicaid by $880 million, in the efforts to give a tax cut to the wealthy. I'm concerned at the SAVE Act. I think people should look into these. They would disenfranchise millions of Americans from voting, specifically women who have gotten married and changed their name. And lastly, I'm very concerned about the amount of staffing cuts we have at the federal level. You might be aware, everyone who knows me knows I want to cut waste, I want to make government work efficiently, but only 3% of the federal budget is staffing, and we are seeing the mass layoff of people. So you could cut every single person at the federal level, you're only going to save 3% of the budget. All of this affects how working-class people live and the programs that we get, and I think it is related to my job and my duty to stand up and say something. I hope people, and I know not everyone in this city agrees with the same politics, but hopefully we believe that everyone deserves human rights and the rights of free speech and civil rights. But I couldn't, I could not come here and not mention that. Any questions from the council?
I want to thank you for coming and giving the update. Very enlightening. Some people probably don't know everything that you were talking about or hadn't heard it. Council, any questions for state rep?
Mayor, I have some.
Councilmember Carefotis?
You mentioned the benefits that in Michigan, we give two times more benefits to businesses. Is that like large businesses, like the auto companies, not small businesses?
It's actually a mixture. It's, we've given the statistic, which it actually comes from a right-wing think tank, which I think is what's so interesting. If you know my politics, I'm not considered right-wing here, but I think sometimes, you know, we come to the same conclusions, because the data doesn't lie. But it shows that Michigan is giving two times the amount of business and corporate subsidies of any other state. So a lot of that, with the mega credits I mentioned, for example, I've just learned, you know, the last couple of weeks and months, that I believe GM is paying $0 in state taxes to the state of Michigan, and we're actually paying them money because of these mega credits. That deal was negotiated in 2008 with the understanding that they wouldn't drop the amount of employees they had. We're still kind of looking into that, though, because the deal got renegotiated after they had laid off all their employees. So there's some major concerns, I think, looking back at how are these deals negotiated, and who's interested they really suit, rather than all of us? Because if you look at the headlines and you just Google GM job layoffs or Ford job layoffs, what you'll see is they're constantly laying off different workers in different sections. So how could you have this agreement for these credits based on a certain job level over time, unless that number was really low? I really encourage people to watch. It's like an hour-long committee, but I think if you watch it, you're going to jaw hit the floor.
So are there plans in the works to change that?
Interestingly, yes. House Republicans actually introduced a road package that includes getting rid of the mega credits. They should run out on their own by 2030.
That's a long time.
Yep, yep. And in the Republican road package, this would actually bring $500 million from the mega credits to local road funding. I voted about, this is very complicated, I can get into it if the council's interested. They, House Republicans introduced a road package. Senate Democrats haven't yet, so we got to vote on one in the House. I voted in favor about half of the bills. It did some good things, it did some things I thought weren't so good. For example, one of the parts of it I voted against was they're deciding how to give road funding based on what's called linear miles, which is I'm going from here to this point, instead of lane miles, which is how many lanes there are and how much traffic is on the road. And they're not including population in that formula. So what that does is that highly advantage gives an advantage to rural communities rather than ones here in southeast Michigan. So I voted no on that portion. The big roadblock, the pun intended there, of the Senate and the House is that Senate Democrats and the governor, and I agree with them on this point, want there to be some kind of new revenue for roads, because we need about $4 billion a year. And House Republicans don't want any revenue increases. So I agree, we do need new revenue. But now on the flip, where I agree with the Republicans and not the Democrats, is the Republicans want to get rid of the SOAR fund, which I've continuously talked about, which is corporate grant funds, and the more subsidies, and then the mega credits. My understanding is at least the governor has been unwilling to move on that so far. So I think maybe we'll get a happy median, but I wouldn't hold our breath.
Okay. And then you actually just said that there's $880 million cut for Medicaid or Medicare.
Medicaid, and this was in the House, I believe it just passed the House a couple days ago. So it hasn't passed the Senate, but we're watching that to see where that goes. That's federally, not at the state level.
Right. And so can you tell me anything that that would affect? I mean, is that like the SNAP program and?
Yeah, I mean, it would affect Medicaid throughout. So for example, my, you know, my wife's a therapist, and she sees clients that are on Medicaid, and when she sees them, Medicaid pays out to the practice, right? So it's hard to tell exactly how that could affect Medicaid broader. I'm not a Medicaid expert, but I think it's safe to say that cutting what I would argue is already an underfunded program, it's not going to be good.
Okay. And then my last question is about the voting for women that have changed their name. Is that really going to happen? I mean?
Again, I think that one, I think that has also made it out of one of the chambers, if I'm not mistaken. I don't want to spread misinformation, so I encourage people to look that up. It's called the SAVE Act. But yeah, that's, you would need a birth certificate or a passport to vote, and if your birth certificate and you don't have a passport doesn't match your married changed name, it could disenfranchise you from voting.
So what would be the result, that everybody who's married has to go change their name back?
Yeah, and that'd be a very costly thing. So you could look at this as some sort of a poll tax. That's the way I like to put it. You know, we had poll taxes in this country years ago, which were not good for enfranchising people to vote. And I think if you're requiring all these document changes to have this, everything match, which has not been the way we've done things in this country, I think you could view that as a poll tax personally.
Nobody's bringing suits forward that this is discrimination against women, since we're the ones that change our name?
I imagine that those will come if this were to come into action. And it's been introduced locally, in the state House too, by Republicans, but it hasn't gotten a vote yet. So I'll be voting no on it if it comes forward.
So we don't need those things to buy a gun, but we need those things to vote. Okay. All right, that's all I got.
Okay.
Can I add one thing?
Go ahead.
We've been working with our city manager here, and thank you, by the way, first city to get every single grant submitted for. There's a new process. This is one that Republicans put in place, but I think it's a really good reform. We have to put our grants in, we have to submit our grants in advance of May 1st deadline to have them posted publicly on a website. And now enhancement grants from the state, such as the fire station money we've gotten over the years, or the sidewalk money, those will be posted publicly for people to see. And they're restricted to public entities and nonprofits that have been in existence for 36 months. Largely, my policy has been to advocate that money to go to our cities, because I think public dollars should go to public spaces. And we've worked with the city manager on getting some of those things organized. And hopefully, I can't make any promises, but interestingly enough, I think I have a good amount of respect on the other side of the aisle. I was the first Democrat to get a bill out of the House in the Republican-controlled chamber. So, you know, who knows? We're going to see what happens.
Great. Any other questions from council?
Mayor?
Councilmember Dold?
Do you have a guess on what percentage of our elected officials accept dark money?
Well, it's, so here's, this is, I'm having some fun tonight. So the way that it works is politicians will set up what's called a political nonprofit, and they can accept money into that political nonprofit from various organizations, and that's not reportable unless you get enough contributions above a certain amount. And then those politicians can use that money in various ways. One of the ways, let's say I started a dark money account, and I started taking money from DTE and others, and the Detroit News has done some reporting on who has them and who doesn't. So I don't know the exact percentage, but the way that it would work is I could go and I could start paying people's electric bills, I could start buying people appliances for their house with that money, which I think creates a really horrible ethical dilemma, because, you know, if I go pay someone's electric bill, well, that might be a nice thing to do, and I want to make sure people's power is on. Does that mean they're probably going to be more likely to vote for me? I would think so. And this is all completely legal right now. It's a shame. And we have some of the worst laws in this whole country in Michigan for ethics. So we're trying to, I think we should limit dark money accounts completely. I don't think lawmakers should be allowed to have them. I don't have one. It's hard to tell sometimes if people have them, but I think prohibiting certain people from donating to them would go a long way.
Councilmember Hughes?
Thanks for, I appreciate being here today, and I greatly appreciate your ability to be determined to work both sides of the aisle. And then just today, when you pointed out, you know, the strengths in one party and their policy, and then, you know, maybe a shortcoming on the other, and not being afraid to, you know, mention and support what's right, what you feel is right. And it takes a lot of courage these days, so I appreciate that.
Just trying to do what, you know, my mom taught me, which is, yeah, follow the conscience. And that gets you into some trouble sometimes in politics, but I don't know. I think we need more people like that, so thank you.
Any other comments from the table? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
State rep. Okay, item seven is we have a presentation, our audit presentation from Plant Moran, Mr. Dave Helsack, Mr. Phil, Phil Amino, and Mr. Rumsey Abdallah.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of council. It's a pleasure for the three of us to be before you this evening to present the results of the annual financial audit for the city of Garden City for the year ended June 30 of 2024. You should have three documents in front of you, the largest being the financial statement. You also have a required communication to those charged with governance, and then finally, a graph package was handed out just before the meeting this morning, which will be a majority of our presentation this evening. Prior to today's meeting, Phil Rumsey and I did meet with city management to go over the financial statement, and it's in great depth. We do that, you know, of course, as rotting, but also to cover the results with management. Much more than will go in today, but throughout the presentation, if you have any questions on anything that we're covering, please feel free to raise your hand or interject, and we'll try to answer as we go along. As far as the financial statements, this is really a document that we take the information and compile on behalf of the city. The only part of the report of the financial statement that's truly ours is the opinion. And as a result of the audit, we were able to give this year's financial statement an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can give a set of financial statements. What that means is these statements as presented fairly reflect the financial position of the city as of June 30 of 2024. The change in that financial position are the revenues and expenditures that are recorded and reported within the document, as well as the cash, statements of cash flow, and the notes that are included to support some of the figures. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Phil, who's going to go over the graphs. I think the graphs are going to be projected for those in the audience as well. But as we're going through that, if there's any questions that you have, please feel free to ask as we go along.
Thank you, Dave. So as Dave mentioned, we do have these graphs here to kind of summarize the financial statements for you and kind of point out some of the areas that we think are important to talk about tonight. So we'll start with our first graph, which is looking at the general fund revenue. So this is for the past four years, and you'll see that revenue went up about $3.2 million this year. Part of that is increased due to, in property tax revenues, just due to taxable value growth. Another $1.1 million of that is related to interest in others, so being a stronger market performance here as of 63024. There was higher interest, and so there's about $1.1 million there. And another thing that happened during the year for your general fund was there used to be a separate rubbish fund that was on its own. During the year, it got, during 2024, got really budgeted and became part of your general fund. So you'll also see about an increase in your fees and fines, and that's just related to recording that revenue related to rubbish pickup of about $1.4 million. In terms of state and federal sources, that went up about $700,000. The main increase there is about $1.1 million related to, you got the Protecting Michigan Pension Grant out with your pension funding. So that was $1.1 million. So some of that increase from that revenue was offset by just a decrease in other federal revenue. And with that $1.1 million, you'll see when we talk about the expenses, there's corresponding expenses that went just straight into your MERS plan. So if we do go to the expenses, which is the next slide, you'll see here the expenditures for the past four years, and you'll see that the expenditures did go up in 2024, about $4.6 million. $265,000 of that relates to an increase in your net transfers out. So that was just transfers to the capital projects funds for future capital projects, as well as the $1.1 million I just talked about. So that $1.1 million is represented across all the categories here as additional costs for the Protecting Michigan Pension Grant. And then, as mentioned with the rubbish fund, now those expenditures are also in here, so there's about $1.6 million of that being included in your expenses here as well. And then just really the rest of it is just some normal increase, or more cost increases to, in salaries and wages, as well as some retirement costs. The next slide, after we've kind of talked about the revenue and expenditures, we like to show them in comparison with, in this graph, you'll see the line is your unassigned fund balance. So this is really fund balance that's not you, not restricted, assigned, or committed for any other purposes. And so this year, it did decrease, and we'll go into detail more on some of the other categories, but your assigned fund balance did increase about, did increase by $2.6 million. That $2.6 million just relates to in your fiscal year 25 budget, expected usage of fund balance. It's usually best practice if you're expected to use fund balance that you will then assign it in the previous year. So 2024 is really assigning that, just knowing that those funds are going to be spent. And then there was also, just in general, with the expenses being greater than your revenues of about $1.8 million, there is a use of that fund balance, which was little, which was higher than about the $700,000 that was projected in the budget. The next slide we have here shows, as I was mentioning earlier, that the fund balance of the general fund kind of broken up amongst the categories. So here you will really see that increase in the assigned fund balance. So you had your about $2.9 million that's being assigned for capital projects, as well as then the $2.6 related to future, the next year's budget. as well as then the 2.6 related to future, the next year's budget, subsequent budget. And then the restricted, the restricted is new, so that relates to your rubbish funds. With that being included in here, anything, any, there's certain revenues that are restricted only for that. So in terms of that revenue is over the expenses, that will be restricted for future years to be used on those rubbish expenses. Next, we'll move into talking about the water and sewer fund, just a couple of slides on that, looking at operations. So what we're really looking at here on this slide is your operating revenue and comparing it to your operating expenses. So this is excluding depreciation. And it's really looking at the past four years with your expenses being in yellow. So you'll see that revenue decreased slightly, but your operating expenses increased. So in the prior years, there were some OPEB cost savings. So as your plan is getting valued by the actuary, if there's decreases in that liability, that gets allocated amongst the different funds, including some of which goes to water and sewer. So in the prior years, when there was significant increases, there was about a $3.7 million savings last year. So there's only about a $200,000 savings this year. So really, that increase there will show the more increase in your expense and really show more of the true operating costs in comparing it to your current operating revenue. And then the last slide that we have here is looking at the water and sewer working capital. This really is used to depict the liquidity of your water and sewer fund. And what it's looking at is your current assets, those that could be converting to cash within one year. And we exclude the customer receivables. And then we compare that to your current liabilities, which would be those amounts due within a year. And so really, this graph is tended to fluctuate with how much cash and investments you have on hand. So with the decrease this year, about, in 2024, about 1.3 million in cash and investments, that did lead to, you know, now the graph showing a negative, showing the amounts being owed higher. But, you know, as you are correct, that is excluding the receivables, so you will be collecting on those receivables. But it's really stressing the importance of monitoring that cash flow and investments to ensure that you are really collecting and staying on top of it for your future needs. So that's the graph. So it might make sense to stop here if there's any questions on the financial part before we get into the end of audit letter.
Mayor, I have one question.
Councilmember Karafotis.
Regarding that water and sewer fund, is there any place, like, you know, it was at $6 million, and it went down and down and down and down. Is there anything on previous audits that should have been alerted to us to say, hey, this is getting low? Or should we put those things in place so that we're aware of those?
As far as audits are concerned, I would say, I would say probably not. Really, what you're doing is, when you're setting your rate structure in your water and sewer fund, it's, you're trying to reach a certain working capital. I know the city's working on that. When you start to deal with infrastructure, you're kind of making a decision on what, you know, whether or not you're gonna bond, or whether or not you're gonna use existing cash reserves. And my understanding is, you know, in the past, the city has chose to use some of the cash reserves for some of the capital purchases. When you're doing that, it'll lower your working capital.
I guess the question then would be, what's a stable amount to have in this fund?
You know, it's normally a percentage of cash expenditures, which can get a little bit tricky in the water and sewer fund because, you know, unlike your general fund where you're really budgeting on a cash-in, cash-out basis, you start dealing with depreciation and principal payments, which are a reduction of a liability or not. You know, you might see in the neighborhood of maybe, you know, 90 days' worth of expenditures. But it, I mean, it's not that easy. It really takes into account not only your current, and when I say current, maybe one or two years out from an operational standpoint, but it also takes into account, it should take into account your capital improvement plan. So not only what do you plan on doing, you know, mostly along the lines of infrastructure, but it can include actual capital purchase, like vehicles or things like that for your water and sewer fund. But also, how are you gonna fund it? I mean, because the cost is the cost. It's cost. Are you gonna use cash reserves? Are you gonna bond? Is it gonna be a combination of the two? And then what's that gonna look like over time? So, you know, we recommend to local units of government, especially when, you know, along the lines of water and sewer rate study, it's important to focus on one, obviously, one year, you know, because you're setting your rates for one year. But almost treat it like maybe two, three, four, even five years out, almost like a living document. Because every decision that you make today has an impact four or five years down the road. And the last thing you want to do with rates is, you know, up one year, down one year. So really having a long-term look at that, of what your, what your cash needs are, and then figuring out a way through your infrastructure, not only to cover those costs, but have an appropriate amount of working capital so that you can cover any, you know, unexpected expenditures. I mean, we know, living in Michigan.
Exactly.
With the freeze thaw, you know, something can break, you know, pretty quickly. And, you know, you don't have the time to go out and issue debt for, you know, some sort of repair like that. So you've got to have those cash dollars, you know, available for that as well.
Okay. I realize that there's gonna be money coming in for these, there's more money coming into this account. But I mean, is this typical for cities to be this low? In their water and sewer?
Well, what I would say is, if there's a plan to be that low.
He's the planner right there, so yeah, there's a plan.
But the plan would be, would have been set in place, you know, a year or so ago. It's like, hey, we're gonna use this. We plan on going this low. But we also have a plan to replenish the working capital. So we don't necessarily get in that part of it from a, from an audit standpoint. But, you know, and I'll shift from the water and sewer fund to the general fund just for a minute, because we did talk about this in our meetings. It's like everything else, you know, if you can anticipate the costs, you know, it's one thing. Are they one-time, or do you have a structural issue? Because at some point, especially like in the general fund, you've only got so much in the way of revenue. And if you've got some sort of structural deficit, you're gonna have to figure out the way, a way to make the revenues equal to the expenditures at some point. Or the cash reserves are gonna get down to an unacceptable level. In this case, you know, there's enough reserves in other funds, like in the general fund, to help short-term cover any water and sewer shortages. But that's why it's important, you know, maybe for the year and definitely for the upcoming year, to have that, you know, water rate study updated. Understand it's gonna be part of your budget process, but really get back to that working capital need that that fund needs to operate on.
And do you do this study with a water and sewer fund every year for us?
Well, we do not. That's normally part of your budget process, we as the audit team. Now, I think right now, and I'll let the city manager speak to how another department might be involved at this year.
Mayor Gutzler, yes, so that was what we brought before you. It is a division of Plant Moran that is doing currently a water study for us to project out and with the concept of rebuilding our working capital, anticipating those capital needs. As we stated in our, even in our proposed budget, there is a capital improvement in the water fund part. Whether we'll actually do that next year or not, in an emergency, we might have to. But the idea being, maybe we delay that, we start to build up our capital, and we get to a place where we're comfortable, and it's Michigan. If water mains break, we have the ability to address them without dipping into the general fund to do it and borrow essentially from the general fund and have to catch it up. Ultimately, it's gonna be setting the rates over, you know, in not just this year, but kind of projecting out how much we're gonna need over the next five years and getting to a place where we have enough capital. And we've, we're also addressing some of our operational costs in your budget. You'll notice that we pulled some positions out of the water fund, at least currently for the next year, just to start to have to address this working capital. So we're gonna try and address it from two places. One, get our water rates appropriate for the needs of the community, and get our expenses lined up so that we can start to rebuild this fund.
So just to be clear, you're talking about increasing the water rates?
There, I don't have the study in front of me, but I imagine that's a very, very high likely.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions? We'll move on to...
If there's no questions on the numbers, get out of Rumsey's way and talk about our other candidates.
Thank you. The last document that we plan to cover is the audit report to management and members of the city council. This is the eight-page report that should be included in your packet. This letter contains three sections that we'll cover at a very high level tonight. So I'll start with the first section. The first section includes internal control matters identified during the audit. And there are four items that we have noted for you to look at in this letter. The first is, as part of our audit procedures, we identified several journal entries that were required to be, to close the books so that the numbers could be accurately stated. Management has reviewed, agreed with, and posted these journal entries. However, because these journal entries were of a material nature, it's required that we disclose this as a material weakness in internal controls. The second item in the internal control section relates to controls surrounding cash. During our audit fieldwork, we noted that the city does not have a process to ensure that employees' online access to cash is terminated as soon as they are no longer with the city. We also noted that in certain situations, the city did not maintain detailed documentation to demonstrate that ACH transactions were reviewed. So not to say that they weren't reviewed, but for us to be able to reperform that, we didn't necessarily see documentation for that. This is also reported as material weakness in internal controls. The third item relates to capital asset additions. And it kind of goes along with the first item related to identified adjustments during our audit. But while we were, as part of our audit, we found that documentation was not available to support the initial listing of fixed asset additions. However, after receiving the initial list, we worked with management to ultimately receive an updated list that did tie to the list, that did tie to the balances that we were able to test. And this is also reported as a material weakness in internal controls. Lastly, during our review of payroll and personnel file controls, we noted that there is a lack of a secondary review over data entered into the system and payroll data changes that were made by somebody that is outside of the payroll process. We recommend that an individual independent of the personnel file or the payroll function perform a secondary review of any payroll-related changes. This item is reported as a significant deficiency in internal control. And for some context, the significant deficiency is less severe than a material weakness in internal control. However, it does still, in our opinion, warrants bringing to your attention. The second section of this letter includes required communications during the audit process. Most of this section is boilerplate wording that's required by the audit standards. But if you recall at the start of the audit, we would have issued a pre-audit communication letter that talks about the audit planning process. So really, this section of the letter closes the loop on that communication, and it provides the updates from the audit. If we had, if we did have any significant audit findings or any matters that were noted during the audit, if we had any non-compliance-type issues, this is where we would communicate those to you. So I'm happy to report that we do not have any such items to bring to your attention. We did not have any difficulties performing the audit, nor did we have any disagreements with management that became an issue during the audit. And we did not have any misstatements that were identified that were not corrected. So in the previous section, I mentioned there were proposed entries that were corrected, but they were all corrected, and there are none that went uncorrected. The last section of the letter includes legislative and informational items. And here you will find some resources and links to some of the latest updates from Lansing and some other information about legacy costs of the city, including pension and OPEB. This section is really, again, informational, and it's not so much audit-specific, but we do include it for your reading. And if there is anything on there that you have questions on, we'd be happy to cover it. So that is the end of audit report that includes the results of the audit. And if there are any questions, we'd be happy to address those.
Council, questions?
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafotis.
Why, I wish I have questions about the things that you brought to our attention. The journal entries were required during the audit to ensure the financial statement presentation was, you said those things were, we fix those statements.
Correct, yes.
Can you give me an example of those statements?
Off the top of my head, I can give you, for example, if going through auditing, if we found a journal entry or an account balance that did not tie to the support, we investigated and reviewed it with management in determining what the correct balance should be. There is, I think we have a listing of, so this included recording activity related to the Protecting Michigan Pension Grant award and the related expense, recording of compensated absences. Those are examples of adjustments that were posted after our review.
And do you know if those were higher or lower, or just, it was just open-ended and they didn't, you have the correct information, or?
They were, oh, you mean in terms of was it favorable or unfavorable? It wasn't necessarily either. It was just open-ended at the time. Okay.
If I could just speak to those real quick. On the ones that Rumsey had indicated specifically, most of this was financial reporting versus like you've missed a payment. So for instance, one of the, one of the journal entries was a result of the, basically, the city happened to reassess their fixed assets for capitalization. But when the fixed assets were purchased, in your general fund, it recorded the cash out correctly. You credited your cash and you had your expense. On the next level of reporting, though, you've got to take those expenses and then capitalize and depreciate them. So that part was the part that was missing. So it didn't affect anything from your budget standpoint, but that second level reporting was missing. As it related to the pension, the pension grant, that, those monies went directly to the MERS program, but the city's required essentially to record that as a contribution of revenue and then a contribution into the plan, so an additional expense. Originally, the rubbish fund, the council had determined to eliminate the rubbish fund. And when I say eliminated, basically make it part of the general fund now. So originally, it was there, and then by the time we started auditing, it had actually been moved back to its...
Okay, but going back to what you just said about, you know, it was put in, it should have been put in as an additional contribution or expense. It wasn't put in as an expense.
For reporting purposes, correct. MERS had that information. It was included in any of your actuarial information. But as far as financial reporting, it was, it was missing.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple more questions for you. The cash controls, so did you give us an idea of protocols that we need to make when employees leave and the things that we need to do?
Typically, when an employee leaves the city or any workplace, there are typically protocols for ensuring that their general ledger access is cut off if, you know, police officers are turning their guns and all that kind of stuff. And a lot of times, we do see those in place, but some things that could be missed. Sometimes if the person has access to a portal, an online banking activity, something like that. And we did not necessarily know anything that, that...
Nothing happened, but the access was just...
The access was not technically cut off.
Okay. And then also about this initial testing of capital asset additions, the documentation wasn't there to support the additions?
The initial, it was more so that the initial listing was not accurate and complete. So yes, it was unsupported. And then when we had it sent back and revisited, it was determined that the listing that we had was not accurate and complete, so therefore it was updated. And then that was supported, and then we were able to resume our auditing.
So we had the information, you just didn't have it in the right spot?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And the payroll and personnel files, so this is that someone who wasn't the payroll clerk or the city manager was actually adjusting these things?
No, I'm sorry. This would be a secondary review. So I'll clarify that. So essentially, whenever a change is made, the payroll person, for example, if the payroll person goes in and makes the change, we would suggest that a second person, not in payroll, reviews it to ensure that the payroll change was made properly.
But that didn't happen?
Correct, yes.
Okay. That's an easy fix. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Further questions or comments from the table?
Correct, yes. And to clarify, again, we did not know any errors in there, but we would look for a second review, and if it's not there, recommend that there would be one.
Right. So someone could be changing or increasing or decreasing payroll, and they're the only ones that know about it, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the table? Okay. Thank you, Plant Moran, Dave, Phil, Rumsey. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item eight, which is community events, Community Shred Day. Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Since 2025 is not an election year, the most asked question my office seems to get is about shred day. So we get lots of calls and emails, when's shred day? When I became clerk last year, I always had hoped to go back to a year. I have to give a big thanks to Sean over at the Family Resource Center. Before a council meeting, we started discussing, and we're like, well, maybe we can put something together, kind of do a joint thing. kind of do a joint thing, promote Family Resource Center, promote the food pantry, and have it over at Radcliffe. So I'm pleased to announce we are having a spring shred day for the first time in a few years. It's coming up Saturday, April 26, at the Radcliffe Center, same time as it is here normally, from 10 to 1:00. We just ask that you are in line by 12:45. It's, doesn't quite have everything we sometimes have here at City Hall, but it is shred day. We'll accept up to five paper bags or cardboard banker's boxers of confidential documents, you know, shreddable documents. We do ask, though, we are also using this as a fundraiser for the food pantry. You can actually drop it off right there at the food pantry. So we'll be there to take donations for that. We do ask that if you are coming to the shred day at Radcliffe, if you're traveling south on Radcliffe, please enter the entrance that is between the middle school and the Radcliffe Center. And you'll come loop around behind the parking lot, and the shred will actually be set up on the south side of the building. We'll take the shred there, and then you can exit out the other Radcliffe entrance. But there is a flyer up here. I've brought flyers. You can visit our website for more information. And then also on the flyer, there's three QR codes. One will take you to learn more information about the Family Resource Center and what they do there. One takes you to more information about the food pantry. And then the one in the center is our general shred day information for a little bit more details. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have no petitions or communications. We have no public hearings. Item 11 is our consent agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A-1 through 6 as presented.
Support from Mayor Protem Dold. Questions from, or comments from the table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Motion passes seven zero. Onto our action items. Item number one is Radcliffe Center Projects, and I will call our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Erica Smith, up.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. In your packet, you've got some information about, I'm sorry, to approve an agreement with all phases. So the committee, it's made up of three council members and Parks and Rec Commissioners, has been meeting pretty much weekly and working out the remaining of the grant funding. So these projects have come from the committee. I don't know if there's going to be an update from some of the members on the committee. I think so. So what you see is a sole source preference for all phases who has been working really as a general contractor for us. And so I'm just going to open it up for questions from.
Well, we have a, we'll do a motion, I guess, and then we can ask questions.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to make a motion to approve an agreement with All Phases Ceilings and Carpentry LLC of Garden City, Michigan, as contractor to perform outlined work for Radcliffe Center Projects, including community kitchen, Radcliffe Gym, stage removal, Radcliffe Storage Room, Exit Science, Science Lab Room, and building wide ceiling repairs in an amount not to exceed $162,541.
Support.
Or from Councilmember Hughes. Okay, comments or questions from the council?
Mayor?
Councilmember Dold.
So if this is approved tonight for the 162.5, what does that leave us?
About $584,000, I think.
Okay, we've got a couple other questions. On the quote for the demo of the kitchen area, et cetera, there's a $500 difference between the total and the total. Which, do you know which one of those is correct? I know it's only 500, but, so the total says 62,264. And then with the possible alternates, it's in 62,764.
It sure does. I'm going to guess that that is a typo. I believe the 62,264 is the subtotal of everything. Then the alternates are listed.
Right.
So I would, or perhaps we could correct this, and that would then become 62,264.
Okay, and in the gym, there's a line item to supply labor and materials to build a temporary wall. Is it not possible to just close that partition?
The request from staff and people still using it is to preserve, like, three-quarters of the gym so that they can continue on and are, like, are tumbling in those groups.
You can't use the wall because it's more than, less than three-quarters or something, or?
It's probably.
Well, I mean, we could. I think the idea was to not, like, to protect the, the wall, I guess, from all the debris as well.
So are you using visqueen or something?
Yeah, I mean, what we've done before is build temporary.
But I thought we talked about the committee that were not building a temporary. I thought we talked about something like visqueen. Is that all right, Kelly?
Like, from the rafters down?
Yeah, there's, this particular one isn't, there are no line totals. So I have no idea what, what the quote is to do that, but.
With, hold on, let me see. Like, so you're saying to substitute the temporary wall for a visqueen? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I thought this is what we discussed at the committee meeting.
Okay.
That we weren't going to put in a committee wall.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was what the quote was for?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and last, any of the stuff that's in the existing rooms that we're working on? Like, we talked about, like, the lockers, for instance. Are we going to try to sell those?
We've certainly talked about doing, putting aside all of the stuff that we're not using for some sort of sale or reuse purpose. I believe the lockers, when they come out, they, I, I don't know. And I don't know if you want to speak to this, because we did this in the south set of locker rooms already. And when they came out, I believe that, I wasn't there, but I believe they were taken to the trash.
They can come out pieces. We can save them for the time. So they come out banks. So they can be saved, as long as they don't come out like the ones in the hallways did.
So the thing, I mean, I know that people buy them sometimes, just put them in their garage or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, we, I did speak to some people. We were trying to find homes for them. They'd come and tour it, but it wasn't the right sizes, and it wasn't the right thing they were looking for. So then it just becomes a matter of storing it. But certainly, if, if people are interested in those lockers, we're keeping the edge ones. It's just the, the center bank that are, I believe, set in some kind of concrete. So I don't know. Yeah, I'm not sure what they'll look like, but, I mean, Kelly will save it, and we can try to find homes for them if anyone's interested.
Maybe we can put them at the citywide garage sale.
Well, that's, that's what I'm thinking, you know? I mean, even if it's only, if it ends up being $1,000, it's still $1,000 that we've recouped. I mean, you know, so.
Might be something we can.
For, for anything over there that's possibly resellable.
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafous.
Also, just so everybody's aware, the committee did talk about other parts of other things that are in these rooms that we would possibly try to sell on, like, Facebook Marketplace. There are some things in the science room. There's some desks and chairs and stuff like that. So even if, like Councilwoman Dold said, even if we're getting $1,000 for this thing, it's still $1,000 that we can use. So it's just not going into the dumpster.
Okay, any other comments from the table?
I just had a question. I know that we talked about, well, we didn't really talk about the ceiling repairs for the entire building for the $5,000. And that doesn't sound like a lot of money. You did say that's covered in the grant.
Yeah, this is all for grant spending.
Okay, and then I know that we've already replaced all of those ceiling tiles, but that was done prior to fixing the roof, and now they're all.
Yep, this is the, I believe there's been two sets of replacements. This was before my time, and we've obviously been waiting for the roof to complete. That has happened. We, we didn't talk about this item in the committee. This came up a little bit later, basically trying to get in before the price hikes on, on this particular item. But the thought would be to bring, to get the tiles here, but to wait for the HVAC project, just to make sure that we don't have any other damage before we install.
That's what I was going to ask. Are we not going to install now because of things that are going on?
Yeah, we really just wanted to get them, because so many things are just.
Are we worried about that's one of the price hikes for tariffs, or?
Yeah, I think, well, tariffs, I mean, everything changes every week. But tariffs, and I know Kelly had mentioned that there was a, he knew about a price hike coming up. So we thought, well, we know we're going to need them, we're going to want them, if we can get them.
We would just store them until everything is done, that there's no chance of leaking, and then put them up?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's like 250 that are damaged. There's some lights that are broken, all from the, the leaking. But we also have HVAC leaking, so that's why we want to wait for the HVAC to be completed.
Okay, thank you.
When we had the damage to the roof, though, and it damaged all these ceiling tiles, do we not have insurance?
For, I mean, before the roof, like, all the leaks in the original?
Yes.
When, when we had the massive issue over there, and, because these are all water-damaged, wouldn't insurance cover that?
I have no idea.
I, I, off the top of my head.
Maybe not from HVAC, but from?
Yeah, I believe, I support that issue. And it didn't come up positive, but I'll have to confer with the clerks. I remember we talked about it, and I, just sitting here tonight, I don't have the off-the-top-of-my-head answer on it. But we certainly did look into as many insurance things as we could in relation to that, so.
Further, further comments from the table? Okay, from the public?
As far as the ceiling tile replacement, the only thing I would advise you guys is if we don't do it before the HVAC repairs and take pictures, just to state everything's new, repaired, and finished, if anything more gets damaged while HVAC is in there, it won't be included in that. Because we actually walked every room, counted all the tiles. We have a list of what is missing, what is damaged. The four lights are damaged. So with the HVAC being done, that number could increase. So you, there's like two options. We either do it now, and we take pictures. And then when the HVAC contractor comes in, they're aware that there's absolutely no damage to the ceiling, and then they're responsible to do it, to take care of any damage they cause. Or we wait until they're done, and then we possibly take care of damage they cause. So it's, it's one of two ways.
Is there usually damage when they're doing HVAC?
They're changing boilers out. I mean, anything could happen. It's not just the HVAC. There's water lines above the grid. There's, there's other things that could happen. I'm not saying they will, but they could.
But we have pictures and everything now. We can't say that what's already.
I did not take pictures of the damage. I just went through and counted the ceiling tiles in each room, listed each room, so.
Is that something that we could possibly do where the boilers are and where the HVAC work is going to happen?
No, the HVAC works over the whole entire roof, and the boiler lines go throughout the whole building. So it's just however you guys want to handle it. I would advise you, if you're going to wait and not do it till after HVAC, then just pull that quote out of the packet and just don't include it. And then we can.
Because it might change?
Yeah, because it could change.
But if we do it now, and they damage it, then they could pay for it?
Correct. Then it would be up to the HVAC contractor to take care of any damage they cause.
Is that included in this contract?
I have no idea.
I mean, is that something that's in our bid, that says if you damage this, this, and this, that you pay for it?
You know, I'd have to look at the specific part of the bid. But, you know, typically, when a contractor or someone's doing work on, and they break something beyond, it's their obligation to, you know, repair as they found it.
Well, we say typical, but we found out in the last few months that things that are going on are not typical, and that we don't have the right phrase and things in these contracts.
Yeah, so, you know, it would take an examination of the, of the current contract in depth right now with HVAC. And I think we haven't even fully accepted a bid yet. We still, we just received them, so.
Do we have any idea when we're looking at the work for HVAC to begin? Would, would there be time to do the ceiling tiles before that starts?
Yeah, I think we're going to know a lot more in about a week. We're reviewing our low three right now, evaluating those, you know, bid offers. And then once, well, actually, right now, we're requesting timeframes. So I should know that by the end of the week.
Well, we have three meetings coming up. If we took it off of this, we could certainly, we, we double-check the contracts, double-check the bids. We can certainly just approve it again in, in a week or two, or the next week. We have three meetings in a row.
Yeah.
Alternatively, if approved, and we decide we don't want to do it, we just don't buy them. We could do that as well. Just then, the issue is, you know, we'll, we'll leave that. We'll, we'll just leave that determination of what we find in the bid and the contract that, that we accept. We'll accept on Monday, and then, you know, we don't have to make the order until Tuesday after the HVAC's contract's awarded, if that's correct.
Any work that we work for, we, we don't charge for. So any, if there's something in there, or if there's a credit, or we'll give the credits back. So anything that we don't do, even if it's approved, if you guys choose to hold off on it, we'll just pull it out on our end and not bill for it.
Okay.
Mayor? So I would just want to add, from the clerk's standpoint, council hasn't approved, you know, the, to award the bid yet for that. So there's no actual set-in-stone contract that's fully written right now. So if we want to do that, something we could explore of just putting that in the contract before we award a contract and give it to the vendor to sign, so.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Kelly, you have to, you still have to order the ceiling tiles. How long would it take to get those in and install them? What's your guesstimate?
They're stocked in a few days, two, three days.
To install?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, no more comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next two items are just calling for a public hearing. First item is for the five-year capital improvement plan.
Mayor?
Councilmember Dold.
I'd like to motion to call for a public hearing for Monday, May 19, 2025, at 7:00 PM to receive comments on proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 five-year capital improvement plan.
Support.
Or from Councilmember Witt. I would imagine we'll have further comments on that day from the public also. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. The other, item three is also calling for a public hearing on the 25-26 General Appropriations and Tax Levy Ordinance.
Mayor?
Council, Councilmember Hughes.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce the fiscal year 2025-2026 General Appropriations and Tax Levy Ordinance and call for a public hearing on Monday, May 19, 2025, at 7:00 PM.
Support.
Or from Councilmember Karafous?
Dold.
Oh, sorry about that. Councilmember Dold. Okay, and again, we'll have comments at, on May 19. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Motion passes seven zero. We have no other business. Item 13 is public comment for non-agenda items only. You'll have three minutes. It's not a time to go back and forth, but if you have a question and we have an answer, we'll give it to you. Otherwise, we will get back to you on it. Anybody wishing to speak? Please state your name.
Linda Skoroff. Couple questions regarding the, the annual appropriations. I'd like to know where the miscellaneous revenue is coming from, use of fund balance and contributions from other funds is coming from. It comes to about 1.276, approximately. I understand the, the law of creative accounting. And I wonder how much creative counting are we using here with these funds that are revenue that isn't really explained where it's coming from? Also, do you have any idea how much the expenses for Radcliffe are going to be? We know that some of these expenses are covered under, are under grants. But what isn't covered under grants is coming out of this budget. And, I mean, obviously, all your utilities aren't being covered by grants. So where's that money coming from? And we were told that it wouldn't cost the taxpayers any money. And obviously, we're getting screwed again. Other question is, on here expenditures, it shows city treasurer is 1,145. What exactly are those costs that are coming out of that treasurer? What makes that up? And same thing with the city clerk, 625, or 26,000. Obviously, the revenue isn't coming in for that. So what makes up these expenses for that particular department? Public Works, I mean, there's a lot of these that just, there, there's no explanation where these costs are coming from. And how come, obviously, yes, there's no revenue for these because it comes out of a regular budget. But some of them just seem a little out of, out of whack. That's pretty much it for now, I mean, as far as explaining some of this, and, um, I think the biggest question that a lot of us have is has to do with Radcliffe. It's, it's a money pit, and it's going to continue to be a money pit, and it's a sore spot, I think, for the majority of taxpayers in Garden City, and I think that you, as people who represent us, really need to explain to us where all this money is coming from.
Mayor?
Thank you. Councilmember Karafotis?
I did have a conversation with our city manager about some of those very first things you talked about, and I will address that when I talk tonight.
Okay, any other comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Just a little bit for you later, you can answer, about the sidewalk program, it's, you, you only got like two years to do it. If you haven't even went out for a bid now, or you don't even know how much sidewalk you're going to do for now, you're in trouble already, before you even start. Contractors are already filling up, and you don't get your best deals when everybody's got a work, workload, they're going to, they'll give it to you, but they'll charge you double time, overtime, and everything else. So I don't know what's, what the problem is, but I haven't heard anything else about it, so maybe after, at the end, you can, uh, and, and some of the ruse too, that I'm not going to like, I'm sure, but we'll figure that out too. And, Mayor, I, I still can't send you that picture, but you know.
I, I know, I know what it is, so I will, uh, there, there's a slight issue that he pointed out to me with one of our streets that was recently done, that he'd like to have, uh, our DPW or, uh, engineers go and look at, so I, I have that. Any other comments?
Mike Flynn, Mr. Mayor of Carroll. We own Michigan Art Center, and, um, this might not be important to anybody but me. We've been trying to get a dumpster, and I've gone through the procedure, uh, which is contacting Mario, and then it ends up over at Natalie's desk at the DPW. And then she goes and makes contact with the dumpster company, three times, and we still have no dumpster. We just submitted another letter today. So I, I thought maybe it was because, um, they didn't like the spot that we had picked. But from what I understand, the spot was picked for me, so. We've got it in the right spot, we have an area that we're ready for it, and, um, we just, just need a dumpster.
Can you, can you give your information to our clerk, and we'll, we'll look into it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other public comments? Okay, go on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and council, not much for tonight, other than I was asked to mention that for our, uh, Mr. Rod Schultz-Walters, in honor of his passing, they're doing a celebration of life on Saturday, June 7th, at 1:00 PM at the United Methodist Church at 6443 Merriman. And, uh, just, uh, his family wanted to put that out there, if, uh, anyone wanted to come and celebrate the life of a, a great Garden City citizen. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Um, just a quick little update is, um, regards to the question about the sidewalk contractors, so, um, the bid is posted for the grant program contractor. Um, April 22nd is the bid opening for that, so hopefully the first meeting in May, um, now that department may have a proposal for council ready to award a contract for the grant program, so.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Proton Dold?
Uh, I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes?
Thank you, Mayor, um, I just want to.
Turn your, turn your mic on, please.
I'd like to bring some attention to, um, our DEA Task Force Officer Weiss, um, who had significant contributions in arrests made with fentanyl. I want to thank him personally for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Witt?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember King?
Uh, nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Dold?
Well, not much, but, um, I do want to, uh, extend a thank you, and, uh, I'm proud of you, our first responders for our fire. A few nights ago, or a week ago, actually, today, right? Um, and my wish is that the young ladies that were pulled out of there are recovering nicely, but you guys did a fantastic job. It was communicated to council quickly, and I also believe communicated to the public too with the press release, so thank you for that. The other thing, I know Councilmember Karafotis is going to talk about her participation, we did attend a conference, made a decision to kind of like, break this up so you guys don't get totally bored, so she's going to give a report tonight, and we'll give ours next week. That's it.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Karafotis?
Well, I thought I would, uh, address the questions about the budget first, um, there are a lot of questions about the revenue for Radcliffe, there's a lot of things on social media. So I just wanted to share a little bit of information, um, it talks about the revenue for Radcliffe, it's around $500,000, so that's true, Radcliffe does bring in money. In that $500,000, it includes, uh, the income from rent, it also includes income from the dance studio, that's around $100,000, and every other program out of Radcliffe. It also includes, um, the money that we get for the Family Resource Center, and from places like Senior Alliance. That $500,000 does not include the large grants we get from the county that we're using for construction, but Radcliffe does bring in half a million dollars, so that, that is a solid number. Asking about the contributions from other funds, those things have nothing to do with Parks and Rec, nothing to do with Radcliffe. I talked to the city manager today, um, contributions from other funds is listed a little bit over $400,000. That's not Parks and Rec, but is excess money from other things, like we put so much money into workman's comp funds, and then we get to the end of the year and there's excess. We put so much money into funds for insurance, when we have extra, that's where it comes from, so it's excess money from other places. Uh, miscellaneous revenue is also about $400,000. That could be from franchise fees, from like the cable company, it could be from, um, insurance, like, um, the insurance, like what we put in for, um, prescriptions and stuff, and then we get back on those prescriptions, because maybe it wasn't all used. And the use of the fund balance, the 378, is the money that has been taken out of the rainy day fund to make our budget, um, equal. But those last three things don't have anything to do with Radcliffe, that's just all general for the budget. Um, we do have three more meetings coming up in the next couple of weeks, and we're going to be talking about the budget, so if you have more questions about the other things you mentioned, then you talk, come and ask them, because we'll answer them, for sure. Uh, on what Councilwoman Dold said, um, we went recently to a conference in Philadelphia, it was a conference for city council from the Main Street. It was a trip that was scheduled before we learned of our budget issues. The total cost for the trip for me was, um, around $1,300. And I just wanted to share some things, I know the, the residents are always curious about what we do when we go to these conferences, so. Uh, so things I learned while in Philadelphia, I learned about CRAs, which is the Community Reinvestment Act, by the Federal Reserve, that requires local banks to give loans to low or moderate income families, or for community development. This is something that our local banks have to do, it's a requirement federally. So I did already call Chase Bank in Garden City to ask for their reports on their last performance evaluation, and to see what's available for our residents, to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to. Um, and if they're not giving those loans to residents, that we can use that for community development, so I'm still waiting to get those things. It does not apply to credit unions, but just banks. I also learned about advertising our cluster businesses to attract more people to our city. An example for us would be maybe attracting people to come here to plan their wedding, we have event rental stores, tuxedo rental, multiple wedding dress shops. We have jewelers, we have caterers, we have six floors in Garden City, we have a ton of banquet halls, and a lot of small space rentals, so that may be something that in the future, uh, talking to our community development director, that it's called the business cluster that we should concentrate on, attracting additional customers and visitors to our city. I learned about digital accessibility, which is how to make things easier for senior citizens and people with disabilities to communicate with our city and get information. I learned about getting tax benefits for, uh, changing to energy efficient equipment in our city, about getting grants for sustainability projects. Example would be like how to keep our large buildings, like City Hall, the PD, Radcliffe, cooler in the summer and warmer in the winter with lower costs. I learned about how extreme weather, whether it's cold or hot or rainy, how it impacts all of our businesses and our city events, and reduces foot traffic and income for all those things. So I learned about ways to help lessen these kind of problems. I also learned about getting better community input, using psychographics for our census and our surveys, so we can actually get a better idea of what our residents want in our business districts, and what business will actually work and be successful here. These graphics tell us, you know, how we spend our time at home, how we spend our time at work, and how we spend our time living life, so. When we do these things in our surveys, we also need to include other cities near us, and what those people do, so the demographics of not only Garden City, but of Dearborn Heights, and Livonia, and Inkster, um, also about traffic patterns, um, and how that helps us when we attract new business. I also learned about developing new local businesses, about our city having a business or development readiness plan, which we've talked about previously. So we can attract more quality businesses to our city. I also learned about Restore Michigan Funds that have recently been cut, and who to petition to keep these funds coming into our city as revenue. I learned about updating our master plan, and how very important it is to use the most up-to-date information, and really put things in our plan that are actually attainable for our city. We need to make these things happen, we have a lot of things coming up with our master plan, and we need to make sure that we're doing it correctly. Um, I learned about getting our council, the Planning Commission, the DDA, and all, um, others that make these decisions together, to make sure that we have likewise attainable goals for our community, that we have shared goals about taxes, our housing, our development, that we all have ideas that we're going to make it work. I've always had a goal, since I've been on council, to increase our population, and when we get to 30,000, we're only at 27, when we get to that 30,000 mark, we can actually get more federal and state tax incentives, more grants, and more money for our community, so I went to more than a few seminars about development, and adding, uh, additional housing to our downtown and our neighborhoods. I really did learn a lot, and I hope to actually, uh, implement these things to help our city, so I just want to share that with everybody. And let you know that, um, you know, good things are coming. That's all.
Okay, thank you, sounds like it was a good, uh, conference. I just have a couple of things, um, as you noticed, we have the hockey trophy here from the other, uh, our charity game, and unfortunately, when we were announcing the score and who won and all that, the money we raised, we forgot to mention that Mike Downey, our rink supervisor, and his staff at the arena, along with some Parks and Rec staff, um, put it all together, and brought it, brought it together, and apparently Westland wants a rematch, so we will be doing that in October in, uh, at the Madano Ice Arena in Westland, but good job to Mike Downey and his crew over there. Also, for, uh, we're going to have a ribbon cutting, uh, grand opening for our FIT Core Obstacle Course, which is the new playscape equipment at City Park. That is going to be on April 22nd, it's a Tuesday, and that starts at 4:00 PM. So if you can make it, uh, there will be some, uh, games with completing the course, and different age groups, and some prizes, uh, different things. We'll be going through that, and then right after that is our Earth Day Park Cleanup. And that will be, uh, a way to help clean the park, and there are, uh, flyers available probably at the arena and at Parks and Rec, that you can scan a QR code to register for it, and help come pick up some litter and have some fun on that same day, that is also on, uh, the 22nd, at, right after our ribbon cutting. So hopefully, everybody can make those events. No further business, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.